Right here? Okay. Thank you much for coming. And I think everybody's got the printouts to get out there. And I guess if you'd like to give us an overview or whatever you will.
So, Donna, is the PowerPoint available for presentations? If it isn't, it isn't really a big deal.
You have a USB port. I do have it on junk drive as well. Maybe I'll start. So, the previous CAO invited us to come in to do a sidewalk condition assessment. Essentially, someone walks the community sidewalks and provides a report. So, that report was provided on or about July 1st. I did bring a copy, a hard copy. So, I'm happy to leave that with the council if you wish. And/or I can resend the electronic copy.
Which one is it, Mr. Mather? I think we have it in our council packages.
So, this is an actual assessment done.
We all need this one then.
Yep.
Thank you.
By all means, I should do this, and I will send you the electronic version.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
What I tried to prepare is a real quick overview of what was done. I'm going to try to be fast, but not too fast. Essentially, someone walks the sidewalks, identifies all the defects. They were put together in a report that also summarized, in addition to the condition of the sidewalks, the types of repairs that were recommended for the town to consider, and potentially the costs involved. So, when talking to the previous CAO, Tamira, she had us come in last year in the summer. And both on the right and the left here on Hankin, you probably walked across some of the repairs. And they simply are a shaving of trip hazards that you would normally come across when you're walking across the sidewalk. It's a very simple solution to a very common problem. So, last year, around $10,000 was spent, and we repaired well over 100 hazards. So, what I've done here is just put a little bit of a short presentation together. If you wanted to toggle to the next slide, that's a little bit of who we are, but essentially, we're based in Calgary. We've worked with well over 500 clients. We've done a fair bit of work with Calmar next door, then worked some with City of Edmonton, et cetera. If you wanted to move ahead. One more. One more. Yeah, sorry. I had these on there. And we'll just go to the sort of meat and potatoes. The next one, please? There you go. So, all those colored dots represent where we identify defects. The different types of defects are somewhat self-evident. Vertical displacement is simply where two panels shift due to frost or tree roots. Spawing is where the top surface starts to give way. Cracking, again, you've got vertical or horizontal cracks across the panel. Holes, again, there's missing pieces of concrete. And each one of those has a different colored pen. So, what we tried to do, maybe the next one, is we did a whole set of repairs, and there's an itemized report that came with the invoice. I brought a hard copy here for your records, and again, happy to resend it. And this is what you're seeing when you look out into community. Those are our repairs. Again, really elegant solution to a very common problem. One more. And this is simply a record of where we did the repairs. So, you can see, you know, down the main street, Hankin, you know, on some of the other streets. And we spent, or you invested, to use a better way to put it, just over $10,000 on repairs. We did 114 repairs. My suggestion is to wrap up the rest of the community. Another $10,000 would likely do it. If there's anything left, it's unspent. We don't spend the money. So, it's a very, again, very simple solution, very common problem. What Donna thought is if I came and just simply explained what we did, why we did it, essentially, I'm going to think much like Calmar, another round of cuts, and we're probably finished with the community. And then, from a go-forward standpoint, there aren't any obvious trip hazards where you have those vertical displacements. Thank you. That's the simple presentation.
Anybody have any questions?
Yes, sir. How many areas do you think are left? Over 114, 114 roughly? So, my guess would be, we're not going to need the full budget, say, another $10,000 to finish the town. My guess would be somewhere probably between 50 and 75% of it. That'd be my guess.
Now, it was just for the uneven ones, not the cracked ones or the holes?
Correct.
So, tell me about you guys and what you do and why is it so much less expensive and what the deal is?
Okay. So, we were formed in 2012. The company is based out of Calgary. We focus on helping communities extend the life of their concrete sidewalks. The reason that there's so much of a saving is instead of demolishing and replacing that panel, you simply remove the tripping hazard. On a relative basis, different communities have different cost structures. You buy and procure concrete at different costs. But generally, it's about $400 per panel to put in a new slab of concrete. If we can cut that panel for $80 and the surface is intact, in some ways, you know, it's as intact, say, as this table would be. It's just got an edge on it. If we can cut that edge off, that panel itself will last another 20 years.
So, basically, you're grinding it. You've got a grinding machine or something that's used there.
Yeah, so we have a precision high-speed concrete saw that essentially buzzes those corners off. Right?
Yeah. And you do that for the cracks as well?
So, the cracks are a different animal. Quite often, unless they're tripping hazards, we leave them alone. And most communities as well just leave them alone and live with them until they become tripping hazards.
And do you think the frostsides are done? They won't reoccur the next year, the next year?
Well, so, here's the challenge. You know, here in Western Canada with our variable weather, after being in place for 50, 60 years, you know, they've matured. Things have evolved, you know, barring a flood or a drought or some dramatic change. They're not going to move much. So, once they're done, like I saw a few around the church, I saw, you know, there's some outside, there's some towards the school, like those should be hazards that are eliminated for the next 10, 15, 20 years. Perfect. Sounds logical. Yeah, well, again, it's a very practical solution to a common problem.
Are you traveling from Calgary or are you local from Calgary?
Home for me is Calgary, but our crew, we have crew in Edmonton and a crew in Calgary.
All right. Okay, well, thank you. Appreciate you taking your time, and we will be looking at this for a little part of our budget coming up here. We're doing our deliberations right now, and we'll get back to you after.
So, I'll leave this. Thank you. I'll leave this with Donna.
Awesome. Thank you.
And I do. So, sounds like what I should do. I'll send you electronic copies.
Thank you.
And we'll be in touch in due time.
Thank you. I'll go send it to the council when I have one.
Hey, do you need anything from the other chair or just the most?
Motion to accept this information, sir.
Okay, we'll even accept the information in the report on the sidewalks.
I make a motion to accept the report on the sidewalk's information.
Okay. All in favor? Here. Once again, thank you, Mary.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks so much.
I'll see you back. All right, the next item on there, the MSI and gas tax information. And see what Donna do with my phone assignments that you have there.
Certainly, Minister MacIver sent communications through, and I thought it'd be a good thing to put the council package so it's public. Basically, the federal government has changed the name of the gas tax fund to the Canada Community Building Fund. And it reflects the program's evolution, does not alter modified subjective requirements. So, it was part of the federal budget in 2014 and runs to 2024. Its purpose is to provide predictable long-term stable funding for municipalities to help build and revitalize their public infrastructure while creating jobs. Alberta will receive 255 million in 2022 and '23 for a total of more than 2.5 billion since 2014 and 2015. Now, municipalities determine the projects and activities based on our local priorities. And if it falls within a general qualification criteria set out of the program guideline, then we can pool and bank the funding, or because that gives us a fair amount of flexibility with this particular fund. The funding is in addition to other provincial grants funding such as the MSI, municipal sustainability initiative, and non-grant funding in municipal infrastructure. So, its intention is to cover capital costs only, cannot be used for maintenance or operating costs, debt reduction, or replacement of existing municipal infrastructure expenditures. So, we'll keep an eye on that, and through our budget deliberations or through a discussion with council, we'll see where the best fit for it is, depending on how much we need or how much we're supposed to receive. So, and then, the municipal sustainability has now been, as we know from our council meeting, moved to 2024. It's been expanded. Minister MacIver provided our MSI for Thorbsby for 2023 because 2021 and '22, they front-loaded it. So, you've already got it. So, our 2023, our capital is 138,000. Our operating is 44,485 for a total MSI 2023 of 182,509. So, we'll consider this for our 2023 budget. And that is the update, sir.
Right. I had it for two years, still. They extended it for two years, right?
That is correct. Yes.
Motion to accept that for information?
I can accept this for information regarding the MSI and gas tax information.
Okay. All in favor? Next item on the list on the agenda, the council reports. First one there.
I was uncertain exactly what kind of report was expected, and I didn't want to make it too heavy. So, I just kind of gave a brief overview of what I attended in February, with the exception of yesterday's is not on here. But anyway, February 7th, the library plan of service. A fellow named Jordan DeSouza presented a slide information session to our library board, and he took us step by step as to how to prepare a plan of service. And this plan is to be filed with the Minister of PLSB every five years. So, that was probably an hour and a half Zoom session with all the library board. And if you want any more details? Oh, I said, hey, can we discuss that just a little bit because we both attended it? Just because I didn't get my report in because I didn't have that document. Yeah, we can tag team. Okay. So, why they do this plan of service every five years, and it's due next year, 2023? So, we're now starting to work on this. And so, what it basically does is outline the plan for the library and what its goals are and what it wants to achieve and what it wants to offer to our community and surrounding area in the next five years. And I had said, I had sent council an email today with these meetings and the slide shows and the minutes and such from all our meetings because it's so much information. I just didn't think you should print it all out because we'd kill many trees. But the plan of service, the Jordan's presentation was really informative because I don't, like, I mean, realistically, a lot of us believe that a library is to take out books, right? But you learn, being on the board, that the library offers so much more to our community. It offers so many services. It's a great asset for our community, and I'm actually quite excited about it. I went and got my membership, and I'm renting stuff out, and they have a fantastic system with the tracking system in that we can rent books from any libraries, and they can be delivered right to us. Like, I've read so much stuff. I'm so excited. The library is vast, very, very vast. And if anybody is uncertain, yeah, stop in at the library and find out what's there because there's online services and book services. Computers, computers. Oh, it's big. So, yeah, I didn't really know if you wanted, Donna, more information, all the attachments, all the minutes, all the...
Just by calendar.
Okay, good. Because I thought that's the purpose of us going to the meetings, and they have their minutes. But anyway, and then, February 10th, oh, that was quite a day. Emerging trends in municipal law, Brownlee LLP. It was an all-day online Zoom session. There's the topics there. I can read them out if anybody wants me to. I can. It was, I'll say, a little bit over my head. I listened in as best as I could all day long, and I felt it was more directed to administration rather than council. But I kept thinking I'm going to grasp some information, and, you know, it was interesting. It was an eye-opener, but that was quite a day. And then, February 16th was a regular library meeting, and it was held on Zoom. And the items that I've mentioned there were our agenda. So, the MOU with the town that's been approved, which we've all heard about here, 2022 budget was prepared and approved and will not approve, but presented here. And the letter from the CAO had come back to the library. Plan of service, timeline and committee was all set up. And, yeah, that's basically what I did in February for outside of these council meetings.
Thank you very much for that. And John, you have one for yourself, sir?
I do, yes. I'm part of the Yellhead Regional Library Committee as well as the Liddoos County SCSS. So, for month of February, for the Yellhead Regional Library, we had orientation, just kind of. Everyone had been done. It was all on Zoom. And we did have a focus group regarding the strategic plan for 2023 to 2025. Just got to go through one more focus group to get a found decision. I'll update as that was made and goes out. For our SCSS, we had our open meeting, kind of orientation style thing, got to meet everyone. We elected our organizational election. We had our chair as Kelly Lynn and our vice chair as Rick Hart. We also received two programs that were sent to the Liddoos County SCSS from other members. I passed those on to Council Rash to distribute onto the web page of Thorbsby. I also am taking corporate planning and finance course that is offered through every bit of Alberta munis, just to kind of familiarize itself more so I can have extra knowledge for myself as well as, you know, to examine all of the town. First session, we were talking about our strategic plan and going through the... The last, the talking with the last CAO, our strategic plan was last updated in 2016. I think we should definitely be redoing that. As well as our second session, Ari knows, we're talking about the quality of life and how that determines based on the tax that we pay, the utility rate, the fees and charges. During that discussion, one of the other municipalities had mentioned they have a dollar in their town office that has a breakdown of every percent of where the taxpayer dollar goes, whether it's to services, repairs, recreation, whatever. I think that would be a great thing for us to have here so that we, all the taxpayers that don't know where their money's going, can see where it's going, whether it's broken down to percentages for each cent for the $100, $100 cent of the dollar. My next meeting on that or left on that is tomorrow, and it'll be on my market report. Please hear that.
I'll just confirm, is that the Liddoos County SCSS?
Yes.
Okay. It joins on Liddoos County now. That's what I thought.
All right.
So, is this something you're doing on your own or is the town doing it for you?
For the corporate financing?
Yeah.
I enrolled myself into it. I did some of my expense to the town, whether it got approved or not, was decided by our CAO.
I just didn't know if you were, because you had said...
I paid prior to myself, submit the claim if it gets reimbursed. If reimbursed, not, it doesn't matter.
Excellent. So, next, I have a report submitted by Commissioner Gilbert, who's come through here today, and I think whoever you're reading his report that he submitted. In the past month, he attended January 20th, January 27th, and February 24th, the Liddoos Regional Housing Foundation meetings. A primary concern of present is understanding the Alberta government view 10-year housing strategy, which does differ somewhat from the previous strategy. The LRHF has been working to better understand the challenges and opportunities that may relate to operation foundation and how to best position itself to work within the new paradigm best meet the region's housing needs. Work is ongoing, and in this regard, including an upcoming meeting for strategic plan update. More details will follow as the board works through the process of fully incorporating any possible adjustments that may be needed. Due to the limitations still present, meetings are still virtual Zoom at this point. It may change now that the government has lifted some of these restrictions. And that was the report submitted by Porter. Any discussion or questions on all those reports? I get a motion to accept all of these reports for information?
I make a motion to accept all of the council report that is... Do you? All in favor? That is curious. Next item, CAO reports. The CAO report February.
Thank you, Mr. Mayer. I'll provide my report, and then I'll introduce the staff reports so that each leadership member can provide it. So, we received an update on our municipal insurance from AMFC. And you have that, we'll be discussing that later on in the CFO reports with respect to our municipal insurance. I've been agreed to the town with the insurance provider getting it organized. I will sit up, and our certificate of insurance has been given to us for 2022. We have it all filed, so I'll provide more details at the next portion. Three support letters were written for community members' grants. Assisted a lot of community members reconcile grants for the park, assisted with final reports. We've got two development permits under way in the final stages of approval, one commercial, one residential. So, that's exciting. Met with young entrepreneurs that wish to start a business in Thorbsby, and it was exciting to let them know what they need to do to work in Thorbsby. If they're going to advertise, they need insurance, they need WCB, and they need a business license. But under our business bylaw, it's free for minors, so they were pretty excited about that. So, that's pretty nice. I really liked that. So, that should help mom and dad, though. We, the staff team and myself made changes to the town page in the target for consistency. So every week now you'll see a town page in the target and it will be whatever we need to put on it. We've signed and returned the MSI grant document to the minister. Met with the Historical Society Regarding Grants and Other Matters. The library, Berry Board Chair, and brief meeting with the manager to ascertain go forward. Leadership team meets weekly and department budget meetings are starting with the CEO and CFO. And our CFO is, uh, is home tonight. She has COVID. She's getting better. Met with Hudson's Energy, just returned savings for our energy billing moving forward from floating to fixed. We were floating. And so we're now fixed at eight point two five cents and they're locked in for a five-year fix unless floating becomes less. Then we'll move to floating a savings of over $26,000. We think just doing that. We reviewed the maintenance situation at the intake at the river along with a visit to the intake with respect to pumps, the repair, sediment tank, buoys. So I've been down at the intake, continue to manage with legal and the various issues and upcoming dates for resolution. We are expecting the Kelmar SCSS potential agreement. I'm hoping this weekend, awaiting their agreement so that I can share it with council as we share the staff member between Kelmar and ourselves for SCSS. They've run into a few delays at Kelmar. Uh, we're working with Telus, their link fiber optic, in determining any permanent requirements that they, they might need. So we've got a meeting with them coming up. We're managing staffing and financial adjustment issues with the CFO regarding union, workers comp benefits, et cetera, and continuing to review files and server files to mitigate or archive. And as always, it's a pleasure to be, to serve the town of Thorbsby and work with the residents on connectivity and excitement in the wonderful community. We have an open door policy, Mr. Mayor, and many residents and businesses have taken positive advantage of it. That concludes my reports of my, of any report.
Thank you very much. Okay, and you want to go into the top ones?
Again, sir, thank you. The first, uh, the first report is our, click here, did it right? Our bylaw report, I'd like to introduce Mr. Rash, bylaw officer, Town Thorbsby, please.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight we'll be presenting January and a February reports for your viewing pleasure. So, uh, so for the month of January, I worked with the HS on social distancing and capacity posters at the Articloss Recreation Complex. That was due to the fact that we, it, it appeared that the HS was leaning towards wanting to understand what our maximum capacities were, where people gathered. So, um, so we worked on getting some of those certificates, load capacity, they call them. Because we didn't have them in our law department before. We had only estimated, so we needed to get a better understanding of that, so we did that. Helped move the SCSS office items to the recreation complex. I handed out some sidewalk cleaning notices, reported the water leak on Union Street, impacting the office parking and sidewalk, which got pretty close to our doorstep. So we've let that stop that quickly with public works. Resigned some door knocker notices, just to make it user-friendly and to get as many out as a person can when we need to. Addressed some lucky dog and noise complaints along with some garbage bins on the street. And you will probably notice that there was some recent notifications that went out about taking in your garbage bin within 24 hours or 48 hours, I believe, with respect to once picked up. Because it does impact our ability for public works to clear the roads. So we just wanted to remind residents to, to take those in as quickly as possible when we can. Worked to remount business license application, the form that we had previously in discussion with our CEO Donna, had a bit of a mix of some development slash business blending, let's just say, in the form. So we tidied it up to coincide with Kelmar and Warburg's business license and it's fairly easy reading. And we just got to get it on the website. So, um, worked on garbage recycling fridge magnets, delivered a dog in distress to the county kennels. That was a dog that was, had been injured and it was really cold at the time. So we, we took him to a kennel where he could be cared for and he was abducted out.
Fred?
Fred?
Kevin, yeah. We, we actually, we actually did have a lot of fun with him because he was such a nice dog. And we nicknamed him Kevin, which seemed to get the spirit of the community to kind of.
Share, share with Kevin.
And actually, some stats on how many times it was shared. It had gained a reach of over 500 people and it was shared over 600 times. So Kevin did, did seem to fit into everybody's heart to try to find him a home. Nobody did come forward, but he was, uh, he was abducted out through country kennels.
To add into that, it actually reached from one coast to the other coast of Canada.
Oh, my goodness.
It was crazy. It was crazy. We, uh, everybody was working to find Kevin a home, so, but.
Somebody knows, the next one named Fred.
He was a sweet dog. He just was, you know, a little bit under, undernourished and certainly probably a little nervous. So we were glad that we could help get him to where somebody could look after him again. Uh, worked to create the animal resource section for the website. We'll be launching that fairly shortly. What, what currently I get a lot of calls on is a lot of people just don't know where the resources are for animals with respect to if they're injured or if they're in distress of any sorts. A lot of people don't know that food banks often will carry dog food for, for animals if, if the resident can't afford dog food. Some food, uh, food banks do carry dog food for pets. And it's just a matter of giving them an opportunity to know that. So we're kind of treating it a little bit like an SCSS resource page where it gives SPCA contacts, fish game contacts, injured birds, injured cattle. And so I think everybody would be pretty impressed to see how exciting it's going to be launching. And, uh, so, yeah, about that. I worked with the Duke County Fire Marshal Darcy, there again on those load capacity certificates. At the end of the day, we, we, I believe we only had one for our community hall. So the seniors had one, so it was just a matter of getting everybody to provide their certificates so that we had a hard copy at the office. So we now have load certificates for the seniors, the community hall, the rec center, both in the lobby and the benches and the field house, the craft room, the library. I think that's it. We don't require one for here because we're under a minimum of 60 people gathering. So if there's more than people, more than 60 people gathering, you require a load capacity. If you're under, you don't need one. So that's just good information to know. And I, and I, and I just wanted to add, Fire Marshal Darcy was just fantastic to work with and he, what's his name? Fire Marshal Darcy.
Devin Stotz.
Devin?
Devin Stotz.
I didn't say Darcy. My apology, I might have added the wrong thing to my report. Definitely. Gavin was a wonderful person to work with. Yeah, spoke with the school about changing the message board and actually see those messages are being correctly done every week. Addressed complaint about parking on 50th Street, which actually caused the blocking of the road because parking was happening on both sides of the street and causing happy behavior to be completely blocked off. So I did speak to the residents, so they're going to stagger their parking. And then I worked to submit with the help of Carol and working side by side with the village of Warburg on a mental health grant, which we should find out in the next couple of weeks, for that life. As you will see, the, uh, some of the issues that I was working on was, you know, traffic, obviously, animal control, community standards. And there's obviously, there's, there's always more, but you know, where do you stop adding stuff? But there is, uh, that's kind of a highlight of some of the numbers and those numbers continue to change month by month. Moving on to February's report, uh, so currently reviewing the utility bylaw currently. Some of the CC numbers are currently represented in the bylaw are updated by, I think it's nine years. So we want to bring forward a revision and see if those numbers have changed. So that's what we'll be doing in the future at some point. Began working on building a bylaw budget, creating a public announcement notices about the sewer blockers to educate the public. That was the caddy or kitty litter that got dumped down the drain somehow and caused a blockage on our sewer line. Created a business reminder ad for business license, created a dog license ad. And that's, um, most people currently have a, a license that is good for the life of the animal. But there's been new people that have come into the community since then and so we're just reminding them to get a dog license to be. Collected the load capacity certificates for the community, oh, community hall and seniors, yeah, that was in February. And then worked to create a youth services directory on the website. Once the youth come forward, the young entrepreneurs come forward, we're going to highlight them on our website and in our directory so that if people are looking for that person that snowshovels or have the ability to cut grass or walk the dog, then those services are, will be provided. A lot of residents just don't know who those contact people are and we're happy to work with them from the office and making sure that they get to work and we have the opportunity to promote them. And then just a last, last but not least, just working on some parking lights or parking light lighting issues that I currently have to do a little bit of work and I'm responding to this week. And that's my reports for January, February.
Thank you, Mr. Rash.
Thank you. Thank you, worship. I'd like to present Mr. Andrew Tierney, Member of Public Works, for his reporting.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, my report for February started working on two lots meetings with the staff of public works, the daily thing that's going to be happening now. In regards to the roads, um, snow removal, it's, uh, it's been an ongoing concern and very time-consuming. The roads are mostly ice. Our machinery is not cutting through it. And due to a shortage of salt available, we can't just do what the highways have been doing and just doing straight salt for everything. Which in turn creates lots of water. It doesn't.
Yeah, it's an unprecedented, this year, I mean, it's been rain, thaw, freeze and it happened about six or seven times. I have never seen it happen so many times this year.
Yeah.
And when it freezes and then it snows on top, I mean, you can't get, can't get rid of the ice.
No, no, and it's, uh, it's, it's freezing unlike most years where you get that snow on top, uh, which actually creates the heat on the bottom side of it. You know, when you go across with a greeter or a loader, it actually breaks up in chunks. We can't even get to do that right now.
It's not just Thorbsby, everybody's having the same problems.
I've, from, from my view so far, being in Edmonton, we're actually doing pretty good. I had a phone call from a gentleman that owns a property right next to Esso, um, in regards to a contract for the use of the land for our snow dump. It's become a concern of his in regards to legal matters if something happens to somebody. It's, I've never known of a, a contract ever being filled out with them before, but it's always been a spot that's been used as just a request of cleanup at the end of the year, so.
Does he want us to rent it or does he just want us to take?
Just a liability contract.
Oh, so it would be our responsibility if the child slid down and.
Yes, yeah. So that, that'll be.
You'll be taking, Donna, you'll be looking at it.
Drew and I will tell the stability issue, sir.
Yeah. Raw water ponds have been built for the spring, for the springtime. Hopefully we don't have to run that again. We should have enough water for the, for the summer. Sewer lines and storm drains are going to require some hydrobacking, uh, for the springtime as our spring cleanup. Just to remove all the sand and debris that's made its way into the lives. Buildings ongoing, addressing the concerns as they're reported. Door, door locks, that kind of stuff, things that's fixed. Changing filters through the buildings as part of our maintenance plan. All of our fire extinguishers have been inspected for every town building. We started looking into plans for the cleanup of the river in the, river, it's the sediment down there. As for our equipment, uh, water meters and the water meter, meter reading equipment. We are past our life expectancy on those, so we are in the process of, of looking at the updates to those. We've got water meters that have been in buildings since they were built in the seventies, which are, we're going to start looking into, uh, cost of replacing, going through the town and replacing water meters and updating them.
Is that, um, town buildings or what is that?
Yeah, residential.
So that's our responsibility.
It is, yes. Um, and then other than that, it's just been preventative maintenance on vehicles, increasing oil changes. Trying to get a pump for after oil changes. And that's all that I have for public works.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Tierney. And, uh, staff member Kelly Probie would inspect your recreation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Four, little ways to.
Two years limit.
I'll just start going through it. So for programs and events, February 14th, we had the first after-school program at the complex that happened public pre-COVID. So we just did a little Valentine cookie decorating activity. We had 22 kids come with some parents. We partnered with a local company called Ball and Cookies. I don't know if she's familiar with it, but she did great little packages up for our kids and made it like a real self-directed activity. So it was, it was fun. It was exciting to see all the little kids in there. And then February 19th, we had our, the first market, the Steel Market and the Field House. We had, I, I think it was 30 plus vendors. They had, they thought it was such a success, they've actually booked it for the remainder of the year, so every third added day until the end of December. So that's exciting. Yeah, uh, February 21st, Family Day, we opened the bowling in the arena to booking for families. So we kind of changed the direction a little bit than what's been done in the past where it's just public shimming or public state and let families book like an hour block of ice and encourage them to bring multiple families and friends and use it. So we had some groups up there on the ice, up to like 35 people at a time. So it was, it was kind of neat to see. And then the bowling, we had, uh, we were full, like right, like we said, I think we said we were going to do 11 to 3 and I ended up going 10, so almost 5. Had to open up the field houses for some families just because there was no other spots available, available for them. So in total, I did my best to try to keep track. I counted 182 people that came through the facility that day. So in total, I did my best to try to keep track. I counted a hundred and eighty-two people that came through the facility that day. Uh, birthday party booking, they're definitely on the upswing. We're getting, you know, two to four a weekend. So Audrey requested her scheduling, uh, her shift scheduling to accommodate those requests. Uh, we also partnered with the library to offer bowling passes. Another example of different things you can do with the library and what people can check it out. They can actually even book it on the track pack system. If they wanted to request it, so we'll see what type of response I get. There's a family pass and there's two these passes that include up to four kids at a time. So we've actually had both items checked out of the library and, you know, and it's. It's a great program because there is no cost to it. It only works if my helper Audrey are already working and we're already at the front. So for me to look on the bowling lanes, I had two teenagers there today and it was just, they had a huge cranky music. It was just fun for them. Um, as far as ice booking, so, course, minor hockey is obviously, uh, our main user of ice. Um, we also do have the Riggers Hockey Academy, which they're part of the Hockey Super League. Uh, we have a reduced minor hockey elite, um, ladies teams that come out and then our adult hockey group. Um, we do have quite a few openings and gaps in the ice booking. So the, the goal for next season will be to compress. Compress, uh, the bookings and start marketing to the outside communities again.
When did you plan to take the ice? So when's the last date for the ice here?
Uh, we were just talking to your best today, actually. Uh, we're, we're going to book our shutdown most likely from March thirty-first.
March thirty-first.
Yeah.
Typical, isn't it?
Yeah, end of March and, um, we thought spring break was actually, March thirty-first is a Thursday. So then that would give us three days of spring break to, you know, when the kids are off, if they could come and do some fun. One last chance, okay? So, so that'll happen in thirty, uh, John is going to reach out to them today, but. That'll happen on Thursday, the thirty-first, and then Friday, the ice guys will shave the ice down as soon as they can until. They get to like the logos and stuff like that, the inlay. And then they'll let the ice melt over the weekend and hopefully when they come in on Monday, it's ready to. We'll talk to our Public Works manager and hopefully get some assistance and there'll be time to roll the inlays and, and get it all cleaned up and whatnot, so. Maintenance, so the focus on maintenance of the facility has just been trying to play a little bit of catch-up. So things that have, uh, not been done over the last couple of years, you know, due to COVID, due whatever reason. So in the ma, uh, in the weight room, we're just repairing equipment that was a safety hazard or replacing equipment that was broken. All minor expenses, no major equipment for like purchases that happened. Um, the hoist cable machine is probably the biggest. Machine in the weight room and the most popular, so cables have sprayed on it, some cables that are snapped. So it was a danger, like we either replaced the cables or we sold the machine, so we replaced the cables because it was a reasonable expense. Um, we also replaced an Olympic bar, uh, a bench that, um, yoga bars, or yoga balls, sorry. And I did add in a hacks bar for set lifting because the reason our Olympic bar broke was because they were using it. Like you would a hacks bar, so doing immediate weights and dropping it on the ground, so we changed that bar to give them what stood at their needs. And in future budgets, we should look at starting a replacement for ground on the bigger, uh, machines like the treadmill. I have a treadmill that one of the bearings is seizing on it and an elliptical is going, so, you know. Ideally, if we could plan for one to two new machines a year and just keep it fresh in there, but otherwise the weight room is. Being really well utilized. Uh, we've done a lot of cleanup in there, a lot of organization. We've expanded into the dance studio because it was quite crowded, so now there's, like, we're getting really positive feedback from everybody that's taking it. Uh, the concession, um, not sure if you're aware, but both the walk-in cooler and the walk-in freezer have been shut down for the last couple of years. Due to being broken, so we had a refrigeration company come out and, um. Check both of them. Uh, the walk-in cooler was an easy fix and he was there for a couple of hours and he had it up and running again. So that's a huge, uh, it's a huge blessing, just, I feel for the concession operators because they've been using hand-me-down bridges and. Whatnot that they, you know, have been donated within the community and they've had quite a bit of. Like we just had a fridge go and they, they had quite a bit of food spoilage and stuff, those expenses to incur, so. They are quite happy to have this walk-in cooler, uh, going again. As far as the walk-in freezer, um, it has a seized compressor on it. So I was expecting, I actually just saw the pullback today and was expecting it to be substantially higher than what it actually came in at. So we'll probably see that in my budget discussion going forward because it might be a good decision to fix it rather than do without. Uh, the ice plant, we did have some issues at the beginning of February, uh, where the ice plant shut down and it happened. Through the night and then through the day the ice plant wasn't running, but we actually did get some melting and water on the ice. By the time our ice guy came in, uh, and it was a relay switch that had blown one, I guess, and. Uh, so they, we did come out and tried to reset, got the plant running again, but once we knew what the problem was, it was just a really old. Relay, so there was a spare one that was not in use, but we had a local electrical company swap the dukes. It's been running great ever since and we have the new switch on hand, so if it does go down again, we need the electrical company to quickly replace it. The new switch, so. No, it's a block, sorry. Uh, so storage pod, uh, everybody's probably noticed, we had a storage pot on the west side of the complex outside. And that was in use to store office furniture. So the cost of that was about two hundred and sixty dollars a month plus whatever the delivery and the pickup fee where did I go with that? So our arena staff have unloaded the pods into the arena because we do have room to store this, store this furniture. Um, they are going to go through it, hopefully this weekend and set everything up, take pictures so we can. Determine if there's a need within the town buildings to utilize some of this furniture. And then if not, hoping we can maybe put it for sale or donate it to another community and just bring in some, maybe recruit some of the revenue. Or, or recruit because that was lost with that rental. Membership, uh, so when COVID, when the building got shut down for COVID, everybody that had a fob, which gives members. Twenty-four access to the facility, all fobs were shut off. When the facility opened back up, as people purchased membership, their fobs returned back on. But unfortunately, the system wasn't properly managed and a lot of fobs never got shut off as their membership expired. So it's gone through and done a complete audit of the system and reconciled it to the paperwork that the town office had for sale. To what was in our system and just to give you an idea, like the fob system, there's over like, there's over seven hundred and fifty people that are in that. System over the years, so reconciling it was like quite a time-consuming job. But we had dozens of fobs that have been active since I dated back to last June, July. Where they have been using the facility but not having to pay for a membership. So it's all been shut off and most, you know, the network of just active members are half fob. Cleaned up the fob system on the computer software. So going good, it's better, but yeah, it was a big job, so, but. It's, it's good now. Um, another issue we've come across is the ice rental invoices. Nobody was tracking the actual usage for the start of the season from like September through till mid-January. My ice guys have started tracking it, but usually it, it runs. Like a two-part system, whoever's booking the ice, you know, which is usually the admin or the manager. Booking the ice then also does a comparison to what the ice guys are reporting, you know, if somebody's no-showed or somebody stayed on the ice fifteen minutes longer. I want to know that so we can adjust the bills to account for it. Or if it cancels or didn't provide enough notice, different things like that, so we track everything and put it into the bill. So that didn't happen for the first half of the season. Um, ice rental agreements also weren't signed, which includes, you know. Your set hours, the ice rental rate that both parties are agreeing upon for the season, your copy of your insurance. That hasn't been completed, so, and then some invoices were sent out and everything was wrong. So that is my next project, um, that I will be tackling. I have talked with all the organizations, so nobody has really received any proper billing. For ice, but they know it's coming and they know it's probably not coming until the very end of the season and they're not going to get one. One large bill for the whole season, so they're patient, we, you know.
That's mostly, mostly minor hockey, like the other groups are pretty.
Yeah, yeah, I talked with like the dude Devon, um, our adult teams are all local teams, so they're. They're patient, they're okay with that. They know it's coming, so they're not going to be surprised by getting this hefty bill for a whole season. But, and then our ice guys are now tracking usage, so it will make the second half of the season invoicing a little bit easier. Although it is manual, which ties into my next thing, our software, because typically all the invoicing goes through our software, but we don't have any. So since the facility has reopened, uh, Audrey has had to do everything with pen and paper. Uh, there's, the software system was shut down. Uh, we have no point of sale, we have no ability to do debit or credit. So it's, it's a great inconvenience to the users and I see now as we're getting busier and busier, people want to come in and buy memberships and I. I can't even help them. I have to send them to the town office unless they have cash, which most people carry cash anymore, right, for everything. So just to give you a little bit of history about the software, um, because I was here when we did the original purchase. And so it, we used a software called ActiveNet and we purchased it in two thousand and fourteen and cost about twelve thousand dollars at that time. It was a one-time, like the initial purchase. Uh, it does everything to run the entire facility, um, down to extending out the invoicing, receiving payments. It ties into the financial system here at the main office, so there's no opportunity for any user error input, you know, so everything is accurate. Uh, the decision was made to purchase a different software in two thousand and twenty-one. Um, so they just terminated the ActiveNet software and then they purchased another software in April. And that software cost about thirty-two hundred dollars. Then they signed a, when you purchased that software, once you did your initial training, you were, um. The contract included a subscription fee of four hundred dollars per month. That has been going on for the last twelve months, another forty-eight hundred dollars, but nobody has done the training or the implementation of that software. So the training has probably dozen different training modules you have to do and only the first one was ever completed. So both softwares have a subscription fee, like that is normal practice, but the ActiveNet, uh, fees are actually much lower. Than the new software that was purchased, which was booking. Also to consider is the, uh. Oh, right, off my train of thought. Um, the training and implementation for the booking software, that would have been about eight weeks of mine time with minimum, uh, probably ten hours a week. Dedicated just to do the training and get that software up and running. I've talked to the ActiveNet, because it's a cloud-based program, our stuff is all still there. So we can find the contract and turn that software back on. All of our historical data from two thousand and fourteen is still in the system, which is a huge asset because when you're looking back, you know, what was successful, what was. You know, how much ice rental did we fill in during this season versus, you know, it's just, it's a great record. Um, it will require some work to get it up and running again because obviously it was just shut off, so there's going to be some database cleanups and. You know, maybe some programs for things that were in there, but, you know, now don't exist, updating, correcting that kind of stuff, but it won't be near as labor intensive as that's going forward with booking. And also ActiveNet is quite a bit cheaper for your transactional fee, so for both softwares, you have a transactional fee for credit and debit purchases. Bookings are substantially higher than ActiveNet. So for ActiveNet, for debit, we pay fifteen cents per booking. So we have to pay a percentage which ends up being higher, plus for any credit card transaction, booking charge of a dollar. For ActiveNet, we can actually just pass, uh, for credit card, we pass those fees onto the user, booking we cannot, so. It's actually going to be a savings of, well, two thousand dollars alone just on the subscription fee. But also substantially more because of the transaction fees that we will be saving. So we have terminated with booking because it was paid until the end of April. So the termination was then, so we provided our proper notice to not be on the financial hook anymore with that program. And then when I'm ready, because I have a few projects I need to do, we will be activating, reactivating ActiveNet. There she is.
You've been very busy.
Yeah, I've been a little busy, but, but it's good, good. Everybody, uh, the community seems really positive and excited and we're getting busier, it's like.
Yeah, I like, the last, the last two weekends, I mean, two weekends ago, I was standing remotely, I mean, it was. It's good to see that I haven't seen that at, at that complex in probably three or four years, so it's, uh. I'm very excited for the play.
Yeah, and course, minor hockey, they actually just put a bid in to host the, uh, playoff weekend, so they're doing, they're changing the playoffs for itself. So we're just waiting to find out if we spot that bid, that'll be bringing out a tent of prices in there, so. Okay, question?
Next one.
Can I add something to your, uh, the removal of the ice? Um, from what I found out in regards to a lot of the other ice arenas out there, everybody else seems to be pulling there is the beginning of March.
Beginning what? There's no playoff there.
Beginning of March is when a lot of, a lot of the rec centers have started to pull their ice, like within the first couple of weeks.
I don't believe in ending until the middle of March.
I know.
Just think, Kelly, we can book ours.
That's, that's why I'm saying that.
Like, you know where?
Uh, I didn't catch where, uh, happened, but I, I heard about, uh, quite a few of them that were pulling their ice, is that on there?
I know Tom and Warburg are standing because they have playoff spots.
So it opens the door for us to bring that extra revenue of pulling out something at the, at the end of March.
I, I know, I know in the past, and I don't know if it's still the same, but when your, your power bill, like if you don't want to go into April because then all of a sudden you have the demand. Is going to go higher and you got to pay for the whole month.
Yeah.
So if you shut it off before the first of April, that's a big saving on the electric bill. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Proby. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. And that, sir, concludes the staff reports. I, I will conclude by saying that, uh, our leadership team and staff team have been working very hard. And working, uh, very efficiently and some days it's not so much fun, but in every day we're making dead weight, so I'm proud of the team, happy to work with them.
I'm going to get a motion to accept the CEO and the administration staff's reports for, uh, information. I make motion to accept the CEO and staff's reports of information. On favor? Very, thank you. And Cindy's not here, are you going to pitch it for her and possibly?
I certainly can, worship. Uh, so CFO Ben Leesman, the update is, of course, payroll is always prepared. She's established a relationship with the benefits coordinator and received some online access and enrolled employees, identified concerns and began to rectify. Here are the concerns, benefits were not properly set up for employees and told that children were allowed to be on benefits, which is wrong and also illegal. Uh, benefit invoices have not been paid since October, this is what we found out. New rates received and reconciliation will be done before next pay period to catch up on deductions. Uh, Cindy established a relationship with pension coordinator, received online access and identified concerns and working to rectify them. Here are the concerns, LAPP, which is the pension invoices that have not been paid since October. Incorrect deductions for pension on vacation payout upon termination of employment, which means T4s are incorrectible, needs to be amended. Employees not terminated or enrolled, uh, in the pension plan. Year-end reports not filled out or need attention to complete, determined out of forms need to be filled out, but will be notifying them of the situation and asking for extension. Reconciliation of pension information needs to occur to determine if everything balances. Uh, we found they gained access to the WCB online portal from the previous administrator's old email. For my WCB to file a year-end report on time. We recreated the budget templates, populated them as accurately as possible, given different budget format and sent to management team for their input. We recreated the budget templates, populated them as accurately as possible, given different budget format and sent to management team for their input, to which management team is working on it this week and will have. Staff meetings next week to work that through and finalize it. All payables have been processed to date. Cindy's been monitoring the budget, indicated where requests for funds are required over and above the interim budget amount, and we have two of those tonight. She's communicated with the new G P consultants, which is our Great Plains consultants, signed service agreement, set up meetings to go over work plan to get that fixed. And to figure out why it keeps crashing every time we do batch reporting, so it's a it's a glitch that they have to fix. Provided information requested staff and C O is required. She's been with prior staff member regarding the accounting. Updated the tax penalties. Clarification on all processes and established that the bookkeeping is not accurate, requires many hours to fix. Discuss website options and possible changes to the contract. We found out that on the website, we paid fourteen thousand dollars. Fourteen thousand dollars was paid last year for a module we can't use. On the website, that's a logic complaint, so we're working with the website contract to. Get a bit of a credit on that particular module and move in, apply that so that we can have a little more flexibility with rebuilding the website. So we're working with that. And of course, we're working with Tim to troubleshoot any of the Great Plains problems, so that is CFO's report.
All right, thank you. And then the next item under the receipt report was the interim budget increase for legal fees, or?
That's correct, Your Worship. So the town authority entered legal fees over and above the two thousand and twenty-one interim past budget. And the budget for two thousand and twenty-one interim was six thousand dollars. It's incumbent upon administration to monitor this. And when expenses that are unexpected exceed the budget amount, we're required to report it to council, request an increase in the G L to pay the invoices. The background, in late two thousand and twenty-one and into two thousand and twenty-two, there have been unexpected and unanticipated increases in legal fees due to contract settlements, arbitration and union grievances. These were holdovers from the two thousand and twenty-one administration that our two thousand and twenty-two administration is compelled to mitigate. The circumstances are covered under court personnel legal. The two thousand and twenty-one interim budget is a total of six thousand dollars within the legal G L account. However, with the expenses, administration requires an additional sixty-nine thousand to cover these costs of litigation. The current administration has not advanced the issues, but merely is handling them, keeping legal to as responsible as we are able, given the previous circumstances. Administration requests from council approval for resolution to increase the interim two thousand and twenty-one legal budget G L to an additional sixty-nine thousand dollars.
Motion to that right now or?
A motion would be great, Your Worship. Thank you.
A motion to increase the interim budget to fifty-nine dollars.
Sixty-nine, sir.
So where does that come from?
It will be. It'll be carried in in budget.
Yeah.
Find room, you have to.
For now, it might come out of our overdraft. Once that bylaws pass.
Must define someplace for it.
Yeah, then we'll just we'll just repay that once we get to next budget. That's what that that's what that overdraft is for.
Okay, can I get a motion to that effect?
Sorry.
There's a lot behind it for sure. Some of the employment camps, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Sean.
I'll make a motion to increase the interim two thousand and twenty-one legal budget G L with an additional sixty-nine thousand dollars. To include unexpected and unanticipated increases in our legal fees due to contract settlements, arbitration and union grievances.
John didn't.
Both opposing to that. I personally would like to see.
What's entailed?
Yes.
We can do that in in camera?
Yeah, it would be nice to see, yeah.
Itemize this.
I agree. Yes.
Cindy probably would have had it tonight, she's not well, so we can do that. Have to be the next council meeting, so the end of the month.
It's still carried, but you're going to get that. Okay. Motion's carried. Five point two insurance renewal.
And just a little bigger one, and of course, the council has all the documentation. Thank you, Mr. Player, Councilman Milling, we've got all the documentation on this one. So administration has been operating from the G Ls from the interim two thousand and twenty-one budget. The insurance billing for the municipality arrived today on council day and the amount required is more than the budgeted amount. We've been waiting for A M S C to do a bit of a reconciliation, so we do have the document backup, so here's the background. In two thousand and twenty-one, by resolution, the previous administration and council were asked to find insurance savings from thirty-four million to seventeen million. Insurance company counselled against this move, dropping our insurance could put the municipality in serious jeopardy, whether it be a fire or some kind of catastrophe. The administration was then advised at the time to have a valuation of assets to which the insurance company provides, but every five years. And Thor'sby is due for that evaluation this summer of two thousand and twenty-two, standard practice. The insurance company advised the past administrations to provide an endorsement revising the property value from reducing the insurance to seventeen million. From replacement value to depreciation value. The form was not completed or sent to the insurance company as verified by myself, and the insurance was not reduced nor changed from replacement to depreciated value. So the town was lucky. Past administration then did not pay the full insurance bill with a balance due of nineteen thousand five hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. They only paid eighty-eight thousand three hundred and twelve dollars seventeen cents. And you have the the email from the insurance company to me on February seventh. It talks about the devaluation. It talks about our recent property equipment and auto schedules, and basically, so far they've determined our. Recreation complex at about fifty million replacement, public works at one point two replacement, town office at approximately one point, one point one replacement. If and that that covers our thirty-four point five million. If we'd have done a depreciated value. I mean, whatever, whatever they assess that depreciated, if something would have happened to the complex, that's all we would have got if that insurance would have been changed, if that if that form would have went through. So it talks about the statement of accounts showing the balance due of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-seven seventy-five. With nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-eight ninety-nine outstanding from January two thousand and twenty-one. And if you look on the next page, you can see the outstanding invoice is nineteen two sixty-eight ninety-nine. The library ended up with a credit note of ninety-nine dollars and we pay from last year an environmental charger. Two eighty-seven seventy-six in environmental policy. The library's insurance to us is nine hundred and eight thousand and our current. Policy is a hundred and seven thousand five hundred and eighty-one. That's our that's our insurance bill. We have a grand total of one twenty-seven nine forty-seven forty, hundred twenty-seven thousand nine hundred and forty-seven dollars and forty cents, to which nineteen thousand two hundred and sixty-eight is overdue by a year. So our recommendation is to recommend that administration requires additional funds from the two thousand and twenty-one G L in the amount of thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-three cents. To cover the billing of a hundred and twenty-seven nine forty-seven, and that includes the past bill that has been due since January two thousand and twenty-one. You also can see there's just some information on our insurance renewal for council in this particular package. It gives you some overarching. I can certainly, I didn't print off the entire insurance policy, but at any time, council has the right and opportunity to read it in its entirety. So. That that concludes.
So how much did it go up from twenty-one to twenty-two?
It didn't look like it went up at all, actually.
Didn't really go up at all, negligible. It is pretty stable, but the premium is pretty stable between roughly one hundred and four to one hundred and seven thousand. It's pretty stable from what I can gather. So that's a pretty stable.
Yeah.
We don't have any claim.
Everybody else is the residential insurance and automobile for everybody. I don't mind what I like. Twenty-five percent.
Yeah, we're fortunate. We're in the big pool of A M S C with all the other municipalities, right? That's that's where we get our insurance and so we're we're pooled pretty well and we really haven't had a whole lot of, from what I can gather, claims. So the Kim, the insurance agent, said we've got a pretty good, a pretty good premium, so.
So currently our assets are valued at thirty-four million and that's what we're paying insurance on.
That is correct.
And so when they do the valuation in the summertime, I'm assuming that's going to go up due to the value of the complex.
It it could. I'm not sure. They're they're coming in June or July, so that will affect our insurance for next year.
Next year.
Once they value, yeah, that's correct. It'll either go up or down. I don't know. It depends what they value it at.
So then, I just have a question. So just adding up these numbers loosely, it looked like our two thousand and twenty-one cost was a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And then I'm assuming that that nineteen five four seven that wasn't paid was the savings that the prior administration decided was a good idea when they devalue our property down to seventeen million? They were saving twenty thousand dollars?
That was their estimate. It wasn't it wasn't proven and it wasn't. They they believed that, from what I can gather from the documents, they believed that they devalued us to depreciation. They moved the insurance down to seventeen point three million. And they only wanted to pay, they paid everything less than nineteen thousand. Those are their figures. I don't know how they got them.
How did they come to those?
I don't know. I know.
The seventeen point three or the? So that dues it by nineteen thousand. They probably picked the amortization value out of the books, maybe? Who knows?
I have no, I have no proof or documentation. I have a council resolution that the previous council had asked them to find savings in reducing the insurance. And I don't know how the figures came to be. I really look hard. I don't know what the rationale was. I just know from talking with the insurance company. That's that's what they were told.
And now we would have interest on the amount that's due since January two thousand and twenty-one.
No, there's no interest. If you can see thirty days over D S L zero in the bottom there. Please cut us a break.
The other option, one insurance? So you're looking for a motion to increase the G L by thirty-nine, six, thirty, forty, three?
That's correct, Your Worship.
A motion to that effect?
So what is, I I don't know what that number entails.
It's the difference.
I got the difference is the nineteen, but what's the other eighteen or nineteen?
Well, there wasn't enough in the budget to start with.
Wasn't enough in the original G L to start with?
Oh, okay.
So it was over budgeted by the by the difference. And if you add the add the nineteen and the over the budget, it comes up to thirty-nine, six, thirty-four.
Okay.
Good question. I appreciate it. I don't like typing these things up. I really don't. I I agonize over this stuff. I don't like it.
I'll move that the two thousand and twenty-one G L and the amount to thirty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-four dollars and eighty-two cents to be increased to cover the billing.
On favor?
That concludes the administration's.
Great.
Presentations are called.
All right, thank you. Sir, any questions from the?
Carol, I would like a question answered. It is brought to been brought to my attention by a couple of people that I just don't know how bad it is. Or how she ruined this town. How do these other two people know? Are they being informed by this council? And if they are, why isn't the rest of the town being told about it? I'm tired of hearing, oh, you just don't know how bad it is. You just don't know what she's done. And you guys better remember. Tamara did not take over as C A O until when? April or May, when Christine left?
I think it was January or September. Christine left in December. Tamara took over in December twenty twenty.
Tamara Tamara just got hired in December twenty.
Yeah.
And she was a CFO before she ever became.
But Christine left in December twenty twenty. She won the money in September, okay.
So who's who, where are these people getting their information, how bad this is? Are they going going into secret meetings with you or what? Or who's leaking this information out to them?
I I wish I could.
Like, how do they know how bad our town is? How do they know how bad everything is if they aren't being informed by somebody?
That's that's a pretty broad statement, like, I mean, how bad? I mean, what is it?
What are the details?
Financial or is it that is it?
You tell us, Carol. You and your daughter are the ones that are all would say you don't know how bad it is.
My daughter, my daughter lives in Toronto.
Yes, Carol.
Carol's daughter, Shauna.
Um, was it in the papers? I'm told, well, I was hearing in the office that there was a lot of problems that they had to fix.
Absolutely.
You said, I don't know how much.
We're all learning. We're all learning.
And I'd like to know where you're getting your information.
I'm not going to use their their closed meetings, but I just know just from the minutes I take in and the notes that there are a lot. They they had to search and find a lot of things that were hidden and misfiled and. Things that were said in minutes that were right. And so I'm just hearing what they told us and you've heard the same thing because you're here at every meeting. So there hasn't been really any meetings that I have come to.
We're out of here in twenty minutes. What have they discussed? We're out of here in fifteen minutes. What have they discussed?
I I can say the sort of that that this is unfair. That people have said to me, and I hate to be involved in gossip, if somebody says something to me. And it's it's kind of about, I will question the person that it's concerning or people that it's concerning. I mean, it's been said by a couple of people in the past, how come you're home in fifteen minutes? They're not discussing very much. No, they're not discussing anything in what they say is a council meeting. They are discussing a council mid-business in camera. That's not right.
Foid issues are discussed in camera. That is the only thing that is discussed in camera. Town business that is for public knowledge is discussed in the meetings.
Well, that's what you say. And another thing.
That's what we're allowed to do. That's M G A. There's, you can believe what you like, but that doesn't necessarily make it true.
No, it doesn't. But either any of you like either. It's all the same. I was recently told also that. Why does an Edmonton city councillor or another city councillor live in Boise? I have no clue. So they came back up again as somebody else. I have no idea. I I I don't, I just know these councillors. That's it. I don't know.
I can't I can't speak what people say out of context. I mean, you know, if somebody say makes a statement like that.
Apparently it's on the computer that there is a city councillor living in Boise.
You can't, if you're a city councillor, you have to live in the city.
That absolutely. So why is it in? It's it's on the computer, apparently.
What computer?
What computer?
I don't know. I I don't.
Oh, misinformation. I would just ignore that.
You know, there's certain items that we can't discuss that happen in camera, you know, I mean, it's.
I realize that. I've been on board many, many times.
Right, so you know exactly how the process works.
That's right.
But I mean, if somebody, if somebody is going around and saying, oh, things are bad, I mean, that's not the council saying it. And I mean, if somebody makes a comment that, I mean, it's. They're entitled to make a comment or they, you know, but I mean, as long as they're not giving financial information and stuff that's foid. You know, I I don't I don't understand, I mean, you're hearing this. I hear lots of things too. I heard that years before.
That's what I say.
It's been going on forever.
I I will talk to you about it.
Yes.
With other things that have happened in the past. And you're through the whole, you showed that, that they happened. And the tracking system that you have. It was an issue for the last couple of years.
It has been, absolutely.
And Christine Burke was dealing with it and she said this particular item was seventy-five percent tracked. And nothing was ever done after that. And that was the fact of. Sherri Morrissey had a program that ladies joined, a specific one to them. They paid for the year's tuition. During that time, Sherri's Morrissey got a job at as a T A, I believe, in Le Duke. So the program was never continued. She did say, apparently, that they could continue with the program themselves, provided they had a certain. provided they had a certified instructor. They had to have that to get equipment out of a locked storage room at the back of the field house. And she said that equipment was hers and it was going to be used by a certified instructor. Who knows, was that her personal machinery or equipment? Not necessarily code, some of it was purchased by Rattle Ticket and the proceeds going to um provide fitness equipment for the fitness center at the recreation center. That if she has taken that equipment and put it in storage, she's not paying storage for it, she's not paying anything for storage, and yet you can charge it to the other.
Yeah, I think we, you know, we discussed that before, yeah, go ahead, Kelly.
So Sherry Morrissey is part of an association, a nonprofit association called Community Fit. Community Fit has funded our community for years. And with the full purpose of enhancing recreation at our facility in our community. So there has been multiple pieces of equipment that are have been purchased specifically for the weight room. Um we've done joint grants on them, we've done partnerships on them where the town has committed dollars, C S L has committed dollars. All of that equipment is in our weight room, has been in our weight room since the day of purchase, it's never left. There's another part to Community Fit and the fundraising that often when you're an instructor, a fitness instructor, it's very expensive to get going because you have to buy all your equipment for the classes, et cetera. So equipment has been purchased through Community Fit and their fundraising effort. So anybody that is a certified instructor, who has taken their fitness training, they come to the complex, they come to our administration and they can provide their proof of their certification and they can teach a fitness class at our facility and access all of this equipment that's in the lock storage. I have been in the lock storage since I've returned, all of the equipment is still there. Everything is, nothing has been taken away. Um and we actually have an instructor that is starting up next week. That is not Sherry Morrissey, she's running her own class and she will have access to that equipment for the use of the community to take a class. It's it's so great, it's been a great program because it enables us to bring in multiple classes over the years and have access to this equipment. So Community Fit has done wonders for our our community and our facility. So Sherry ran her own classes, but we also, and people would pay the registration to their instructor, that doesn't come through. Uh we store the equipment, we ensure that all the instructors are certified and insured. They run their class, they pay the rental fee to the to the complex. It's all above board, it's fantastic.
So it's C S L's equipment which we're storing for any fitness classes that would like to have offering? That's the, I think that's the.
So it's been, since it's been purchased, it has been in our facility, in our lock storage, which we control. So I would say, I mean, we should definitely have a discussion with Community Fit, but it has always nothing has changed over the years at all. Always been there for community usage. But we can't have just.
Anybody use it?
Anybody that just gets a membership going into the lock storage that has you know, stuff for to teach a class of fifteen people, go and takes it, start pulling that equipment out, using it and and maybe and they're not trained to use.
So does it leave the building?
No.
It is it stays here the whole time?
It stays here. In our possession since purchased, on both ends of it, so I would say we.
So there's there's a benefit benefit to to the residents and anybody that uses it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but Phil didn't answer the question, who owned that equipment?
It's it's a joint partnership between Community Fit and the town of Thorsey, so it's a great thing, so I don't understand what more needs to be said about it. Nothing has changed, like, I was gone for four years and I've come back and nothing has changed as far as the equipment, so.
So basically, it it's donated to the complex for the use of the residents and source.
True a nonprofit association, which I.
Nobody makes any money off it.
In an individual person and a nonprofit.
Yeah, there's no, there's no fees charged to use, there's no nobody's getting any money out of it, it's 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 for our people to use.
It sounds like they get money to like to rent.
Okay, yeah.
To the instructors, so it works great for for the town's benefit, but.
So is she paying rent? So that's so I can't.
No, nor should she, because it is our, we are using that equipment. The town is is accessible to any instructor to teach a class, like, it's not a Community Fit storage compound where they come and go and take things out, I mean, it's it's not like that at all. It is controlled by the town.
Oh, I tend to disagree on quite a number of those points, which brings me to another um problem that we have. And you had said. Oh, that was in the past, forget about it now, no way. When Barry Rush, the mayor. I spoke to him about it on Zoom one day.
Was there Zoom back then?
It's appeared. Nobody knows where it went to.
Oh, I do.
Nobody has any record of it being sold?
We didn't own it, but she does. I know exactly where that equipment is and how we came to get it. So when we did the redevelopment of the complex and converted the curling ring to the field house, the elementary school had just gymnastics equipment that came to our facility. That equipment was owned by Black Hole School Division. We ran, we had put special things in the flooring so that we could have this equipment installed, take it down and up, up and down for every class, we ran a gymnastics program, that program went by the wayside over the years. We were unable to successfully get an instructor. The decision was made because it was all stored in the field house and you could walk climbing apparatuses, it was a hazard. So we talked with Black Hole School, they said they would take it back, because Black Hole School, the C S B team, had picked up all of that equipment and took it back to their facility because they owned the equipment.
Okay. When the recreational week has never been pulled, I was on it with my husband. Yes, and we decided what was going to happen with all this. They didn't have the equipment then, it was over the elementary school then. The elementary school had it because previously, and I probably before all of that time. Um it was lent to the elementary school. And when gymnastics started up a program here, we went to the elementary school and said, they were not using it because they didn't have a licensed trainer. So we went to the elementary school and said, if you're not using it, we could, you take it back. And they said, yes, by all means, that's how it came back here. I was on that deal.
Well, you know, the thing is here, like, I'm I'm glad you're able to answer those questions that Kelly, but you know, I mean, I I I don't know what to tell you, Irene, I mean, this stuff is, this stuff, we're trying to deal with this current stuff, and I mean, we can't go back to that stuff and fix problems that was three years ago, six years ago, whatever it was. And 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 I I I understand your concern for it, but, you know, we've uh uh you know, it's just like Debbie's Debbie's question, you know, bad, with nobody's saying that, we're trying to fix this thing here, we're trying to deal with the current stuff here. Um we've we've got a budget we've got to get out here and we're dealing with the current stuff. We have no taste for going back to the the putting blame on old councils or old things or whatever like that, so we're trying to get things going here on a reasonable keel and and I think we're making some great progress here and and uh and that is what it is.
I don't see any progress to talk.
How can you rectify it?
Nothing happening.
Mike?
No, how can you rectify the uh gymnastics?
I was involved with.
But how can it be rectified? No, how can it be rectified now? What what do you want us to do about it? I don't know what we can do.
Well, if it's sort of a little bit difficult to answer questions, then you can always come up with that, we we don't know what to do.
The equipment is not here.
Sam, go ahead.
Later, for a moment here, I'll change the subject because that's okay at this point. Uh seeing now that I'm retired, I happened to watch the Zoom one, the county meeting today, their council meeting, and they were talking about the Western diversification due to the coal um mine at uh Capital Power and to power being closed down and they were talking about Western diversification uh opportunities for communities and they mentioned Thorsey and they mentioned Warburg and they mentioned Nisku. So I was just wondering if you've heard anything about it, they said they have been in contact with Thorsey uh council as well as the Warburg Council and there is funds apparently, there is stuff that you can use or do, so it's just a a point of information. It's called the Western di- diversification. Number one, number two, the bylaw officer is sitting here and I need to ask you this question because we had a seniors meeting the other night and apparently our light in the parking lot is is not in the right position. And we're just wondering uh when we have to get it moved or do we have to move it? Uh we're going to be paving that area probably somewhere in the middle of May-ish. And if we're going to move it, we have to move it prior to the compaction being done, if we're going to move it to the center or whatever. So in general, what is the uh bylaw on that light, is it the wrong squad or, you mentioned something in your uh in your synopsis, uh something about light bylaws, sir?
I think Daryl was the one that was more concerned.
So I did talk to the president, Pat, about it and I was going to submit um the email back to her today. But I was working on some business license. Yeah, that's okay, I was just. So um with respect to the land use bylaw, the the only thing with respect to the lighting specifically with the parking lot is it states in there that just not to um have it shining where it impacts on the neighboring property in a negative manner. Uh so nothing in the traffic bylaw currently that states any relation to lighting at all. So my recommendation uh in conversations with C E O Donna also on the issue uh yesterday was that we're leaving it up to the discretion of the seniors to correct it how they want by probably just tilting the light a little further down to the ground.
Yeah, that's what we're going to try to do, but we would like you to make sure that it's done properly before we pave it.
Well, we can put it in the middle.
Just saying, maybe it'll cost us too much to move.
Yeah, I did take pictures and I did document it from all angles. And I know it does have a a very bright um illuminating.
This much, I think it just seems to.
It it's goofy how it's set up because the lights are slightly angled, so no matter how much you tilt it, you're still going to have the high point shining towards the road, which may impact some of the seniors entering the parking lot in a negative manner. Um but from a standpoint of bylaw, um it doesn't impact um the bylaws at all.
Okay.
So it's more of a internal issue that the seniors have to address on what best will suit their needs and 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 come up with, should we keep it on the side or should we move it to the center?
Perfect, okay.
The seniors discretion, okay.
Very good.
Actually contacted Thorsey.
Thorsey, in regards to?
They actually have grants for uh doing lights for center parking lots and stuff like that, even for seniors.
I think the the issue of, the issue of uh money for that, we we can cover it right away, it's no problem moving it, we have to spend three, four thousand dollars. But the issue is, do we have to move it is number one?
You do not have to move it.
That's all we need to know, okay, and next thing is.
We are leaving it up to the good judgment of the seniors to decide what best suits their needs.
Good enough, okay, and next is summer students, are you going to get summer students this year? Because some have been phoning me, some have been asking me in the past they have.
The grant is uh miss uh Mr. Referee, Mr. Cobb, the grant has been put in, we're awaiting um confirmation or waiting on something?
That'll be in the paper and in your website.
Absolutely.
Okay, another thing is, I see your public work department person is here today, I want to thank, I thanked you last time you weren't here. For quickly doing the sanding of that uh front road and the back part of the rec center. Uh was it a week ago or two weeks ago and it was so slippery? I mean, I just mattered to talking to you for two minutes and you went out there within twenty, it was tough, so thank you again very much. You weren't here at the meeting, but you were there at the ready, wasn't you?
Another guy that was bald.
And also on March the nineteenth, we're having another big ending there, a pancake breakfast in the hall and the rec center is having a room ball, an art display and there's going to be the
See, the market.
Market is going to be there, there's going to be about a thousand people in there, you were parking all over, so if I could be maybe standing prior to or whatever, if it's not already gone.
It'll be melted by them, Sam, what are you talking about?
I have a uh, I'm going to attempt tomorrow, hopefully.
It's supposed to snow this afternoon or tomorrow, so anyway. Next thing is, do you, Kelly, ball diamonds, how does one rent a ball diamond? Who looks after them? Who cuts the grass? Who does that?
Uh so uh the town will be looking after the grass, we're still scouting shale with minor ball as far as dragging the shale. Um booking the diamonds will be through me, it'll be just like booking a regular facility. Booking a meeting room or the ice, they'll book the ball diamonds.
And bases and stuff like that, we all have, we just rent them or just part of the field? So if I wanted to rent.
Not even a hundred percent sure about the bases, we have to move to.
So if Daryl lost my, I wanted to rent it for anything, play some ball or something, we could get the bases or.
I'm sure we, I'm sure we can get the.
Next thing is, there was a whole bunch of old trophies that I've, they've been asked asking me this for the last ten years. There was a whole bunch of old trophies in the front hallway of the rec center where you have the kitchen store and there was a whole bunch of old trophies. From curling, from baseball way back when Daryl played, uh pictures, you name it. And all of a sudden, those trophies have disappeared. All the old things have gone, I'm just wondering, is there, are they put somewhere like under the steps of the bleachers or is there someplace upstairs? That was history, just asking.
As well, Sam, as all the names that were on the back wall had all disappeared as well and um there was thousands and thousands of dollars that were donated to the complex and those though disappeared.
Yeah, so we're just wondering, where did that all end?
Where did it go? Where did this go?
I I will say, Mr. Cobb, that how about we investigate and we get after, thank you, I have no idea.
We did look on, uh somebody did look under the steps which we thought, uh the bleachers, which we thought were there, but they're they're not there unless we missed them.
When did this happen?
Five, four or five years ago when they did the uh the basketball court area.
When they redid the field house?
Yes, and all the time there was this massive cleanup of the place, all the curling rocks disappeared. I'm wondering, is there somewhere in that building that this stuff or curling stuff was sold?
If that was sold, the rocks were sold.
That was the last bit.
That was donated to. Anyway, just asking about those old trophies and the house. Old line then upstairs in the meeting room, what happened to that room?
Uh it's it's just a generic room right now, it's like.
Or meetings or whatever.
Yeah, there's.
There was exercise up there at one time, I think it's just a while ago, wasn't it?
We had one user group go up there to.
It says it's when there was the meeting, when we had the election there and they were exercises up in that room. Last election that we had.
October.
We were all at the complex.
Yeah.
Yeah, that was uh that was dry land training.
Oh, okay, I didn't know what it was, but I saw them moving around.
So it's it's still there, okay. Okay, next thing is, insurance on the hall, you had mentioned you have a hundred and, I was just very, millions of dollars of insurance on village for the town of uh Thorsey. So now, insurance on that hall, what does it cover and do you have an insurance policy on the on the community vault and we also have one? How does that, I know, but I'm just wondering, do we have to have two policies?
Don't they have to have it for them and we cover the building?
I believe so.
Liberties?
Let me, let me look at our.
Do you check into that?
Let me look at our new insurance policy, I'll give you a call.
Because it's a fair chunk of money, like, we have to pay, like, I don't know, what's two, three thousand dollars?
Yeah, I'm I'm not sure, I just got the new policy today, so I'll look at the indemnity key.
I have one more thing, it's very important. You've all watched N H L hockey, correct? But I'll tell you, you've never seen hockey like you're going to see here Thursday night. Six thirty at the arena, the Warburg, Kelmer, uh Thorsey. Six thirty at the arena, the Warburg, Kelmore, Thorsey, under eighteen boys hockey teams playing Winfield on the, some sort of finals in their division. And that is superb hockey. I'll tell you, you want to see it, blood and guts, come to that game. Six thirty, this Thursday, rec center.
You know it, baby, you know.
I don't see either. And I got just two more things.
Oh, my gosh.
Well, sorry. Okay, I got two more things. I know you're going to have, and, and, and I know you're going to have some of these things into the bank, et cetera, but there's, there's some, and I shouldn't say this because I taught biology thirty for many, many years. Spelling to me meant nothing. But I think spelling on these contracts means something. For example, if you look, and this is the boring bylaw.
Yeah.
In that little box, the town of Thorndyne.
Yeah.
Line of credit.
You stole my son.
Please don't, please don't mail that in. And, and, and another one is filled up by E T V. And one more thing, FOIP, that's F I O P. That's on page. And that's on page twenty-two of twenty-two. Two minutes. And thank you once again. Hockey night. And it's not like biology, that's kind of like a jerk. That's all, leave the, leave the box. Thank you. Thank you.
Don't you go take your sleeping home?
Uh, no.
You better take them home with you. Go over there. You can leave that.
All over it. Okay, now, we don't have the.
Oh, no. Oh, that's okay.
Hey, um, oh, you, you don't need any more insurance.
Well.
We have the motion for a charter, right? Yeah, it's an insurance, if you're still inclined.
Okay. All right, can I get a motion for a government?
I can, go ahead, John.
Yeah, you're on. On paper? Carry on. All right, you guys.